To this September the 17th city council meeting, it is officially called to order at 8:31 a.m. And as usual, we will start with our chaplain prayer and pledges, and we have Gary and Marcella Jenkins here to lead us in both.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we ask for your wisdom as we get begin our this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insight, and we welcome your presence among us. Guide us in our discussions and decisions, helping us to seek what is best for all involved. We trust in your perfect wisdom and ask that you direct our meeting according to your will. In James 1:5, it says, "If any of you lack wisdom, let him ask God who gives generously to all without reapproach, and it will be given to him." We claim this promise as we start our meeting and trust in your provision. We pray for our mayor, Brenda Gunner, this council, our first offender, and this city. May the strength of God sustain us; may the power of God preserve us; may the hand of God protect us; may the way of God direct us; may the love of God go with us this day and forever. Amen.
Please repeat after me the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, justice for all. Under the flag of allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We have two proclamations this morning, and the first one will be for the San Angelo Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center. I'm sure there's people in the audience for this, but I'm mistaken. So we'll just read it and thank them for putting on the wonderful event that was last night. The speaker was phenomenal. I think all of us walked away inspired and feel like we haven't done enough in life, and it's never too old to keep kicking. So with that, we will move into this. The San Angelo Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center, HHM, was established in 2020 with a mission to educate and provide public awareness of the Hispanic community's impact throughout the past, present, and future. The HHM, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, operates through the dedication of volunteers and the support of our community, led by a committed board of 19 members. The Hispanic Heritage Committee's vision is to empower Hispanic leaders and create opportunities that have not yet been accomplished, fostering the promise of the Hispanic community through events, venues, and initiatives that promote culture, history, and accomplishments. The HHM has made significant strides in cultural enrichment through impactful events and educational programs, such as the Dia La Marata's Celebration and the Hispanic Heritage Month banquet showcasing outstanding individuals and organizations. The nationwide theme for Hispanic Heritage Month 2024 is, quote, "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together," which celebrates the spirit of innovation, unity, and progress within Hispanic communities across the country. This theme highlights the collective efforts of individuals and organizations who are pioneering positive change and building a brighter future through their commitment to cultural preservation, education, and community engagement. The HHM's upcoming events, including the B... I'm not going to pronounce this right, so I'm going to tell you this right now. It's not going to be coming out of my mouth correctly. So the Byan Vanedia L... I'm going to have Lucy say that.
Okay, exactly. I meant to say it that way.
And the Katrina workshop reflect this theme by fostering cultural pride, educating the public, and providing meaningful experiences that connect our community to its heritage. The planned physical location of the HHM in the San Angelo Cultural District will serve as a permanent space to honor Hispanic contributions and host community events creating a lasting impact for future generations. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of San Angelo, that we hereby recognize and commend the San Angelo Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center for its outstanding contributions to our community and its dedication to celebrating and preserving Hispanic heritage. Further, we support the nationwide theme, "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together", and encourage all residents to engage with and support the museum's initiatives to foster a deeper appreciation of our shared cultural heritage and community spirit. Thank you to all of them who participated and worked hard to pull off that event. It was really fantastic. The next one is for the Tom Green County Hunger Coalition, and I know there's individuals in the audience to receive this. Tom Green County Hunger Coalition is a group of organizations and community members taking action together to end hunger in our community. Our mission is to coordinate hunger relief efforts in Tom Green County by facilitating programs that address the issue of hunger for today, tomorrow, and a lifetime. The Tom Green County Hunger Coalition strategically assesses the structure and procedures of local food delivery systems, identifies resources and gaps, makes decision for change, and implements action plans to ensure that more people have access to healthy and nutritious food. We galvanize the community behind the cause, empower community leaders, build long-term bonds of collaboration, maximize effective use of resources, and ensure mutual accountability for results. Food insecurity occurs when people do not have enough nutritious food to eat and do not know from where their next meal is coming. In Tom Green County, the overall food insecurity rate is 15.7%, reflecting 18,720 food insecure persons. The child food insecurity rate is even higher at 20.3%, with 5,840 children at risk for being hungry. There are many causes of food insecurity: poverty, chronic health conditions, unemployment, lack of affordable housing, and discrimination, among others. The Tom Green County Hunger Coalition's goal for the "Hunger Happens Here" Food Insecurity Awareness Campaign is to make our community more aware and sensitive to the fact that we do have a problem with food insecurity in our own community, and that by working together to address it, we can improve the lives of many of our fellow citizens. Hunger ends where our community begins. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby acknowledge the month of September's Hunger Action Month and Food Insecurity Awareness Campaign Month. Hunger happens here. Mary, would you like to speak?
We are so excited to be able to have this opportunity to address you today, but what we wanted to tell you about was the Food Insecurity Awareness Month that we are experiencing right now in September. September is Hunger Action Month, and so we chose this month to make a special emphasis and try to make our community aware of the fact that we do have an issue or a problem with food insecurity. Too many people think that we just... That that's something that happens in Africa or someplace way off, but it's not something that happens in our own community. But that is not the case. As you heard in the proclamation that Mayor Gunter read, we have 15.7% of our population in Tom Green County is food insecure. That means that they're not real sure where their next meal is coming from. And so we tried to do projects with the Hunger Coalition to address that, especially with children's hunger. As you read, as she read that figure, it's 20.3% of our kids are at risk of being hungry. So we have our Kids Eat Free program that we do in the summertime. But right now, we're running this campaign, and you may have seen our ads that have been on television this month, and will continue to be through the end of the month, that hunger really ends where community begins, and it's hunger happens here. And so we really need for the whole community to pull together, to do everything that we can to make sure that our neighbors are not hungry. And so anything that we can do, we want to do. I wanted to introduce Rochelle Blakemore. She is the new president of the Tom Green County Hunger Coalition, and let her just tell you a minute about the OutRun Student Hunger project that we did this past weekend.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for having us today in this proclamation. We're very proud to be a part of this. So this past Saturday at Angelo State Campus, we had our OutRun Student Hunger, and the entry fee to the run or walk, whichever you chose to do, was just some food for the pantries at the colleges. And we had some insightful news from ASU pantry. And for those of you that don't know, both colleges, ASU and Howard, both have pantries where the students can come in and get food or hygiene items to help them out while they're trying to get their education. As we all know, hunger is something that really stops the education process and the learning process. And so we want all of these students, whether they're in elementary school, high school, or college, to be able to get a good meal so that they can continue with their studies. We had a great turnout. A lot of the students won some great prizes that were donated, and we were able to give 12, I think, boxes of food to each of the campuses. And ASU told us that this year is... They usually have a really good supply of stuff at their pantry. This year, however, they've really been hit hard by the students. It's the first year that they've not been able to keep their pantry completely full. And so it's very important that we know these statistics and know that things are happening so we can try to help this situation and help those in need. Thank you so much.
I wanted to also mention that we do have a website, tomgreencountyhungercoalition.org. And on that website, you can see the video that's been playing on the television. But it also has an opportunity for... It has a little booklet that's there that if you want to volunteer for any of these organizations that address the problem of hunger, then you can go on there and look in that booklet. It will tell you a little bit about that organization, and it will also tell you who to contact and what kind of jobs are available for a volunteer. So two of the goals that we had for this hunger awareness campaign was that we were hoping that more volunteers would come forward for these organizations. And then the other thing is currently, we do not have a food pantry that is open after hours. And we gave you those statistics about food insecurity, but to realize that a lot, in fact, most of the people that are food insecure are working. It's just that maybe both members of the... Both parents are working, but they just cannot make enough money to make ends meet. And so we wanted to... We would love to have a pantry that can be open after hours so that these folks that have jobs where they're not away... Not able to get away during the lunch hour or... Which is when most of the pantries are open. If they're not able to get away, then they would have a place to go where they could get help with additional food. So just be with us on that. If you have any way of getting any of the pantries to participate with that, that would be wonderful. We did have a photo voice presentation three weeks ago to kick off this food awareness campaign, and we had wonderful pictures. Thank you, Mayor, for coming. We really appreciated that. And we... Each of those pictures had a caption of what it meant to them. Why did they take that picture? Why did that mean hunger to them? And it was very impactful, and we would love to be able to share that... Those pictures and those captions with you in your places of business or in your churches. So if you have a way that you could display those pictures for us, please contact us at our office. And we, like I said, we have a website, tomgreencountyhungercoalition.org. Thank you so much for your time.
Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz's, begin by stating their name and address or single member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. I would like to start by thanking Chief Brody and Police Chief Travis Griffin for their participation in the 9/11 celebration and event that we did last week. You know, we continually say the fine, let's never forget. And we need to make sure that all of us participate in a 9/11 celebration or awareness of what happened on 9/11. And so for me, again, I want to thank those who attended and participated. We can never forget. And our police and our fire is a very important part of this city. What they do, what they help us with, and they're here to help celebrate and support all of those who lost their lives and have continued to have health problems following 9/11. Thank you all for being there and doing the event, and let us say let us never forget. Thank you. Other public comment? Please come forward.
Good morning, Mayor, Council members, City Manager, San Angelo community. My name is Maera de la Canal. I am in Midland, Texas, at the State Building Center for Engineering and Economic Diversification. I represent the U.S. Export Assistance Center and the Rural Expo Center. Both of these centers are part of the U.S. Department of Commerce's International Trade Administration. We recently opened an office in Midland, Texas, to serve the West Texas Territory. We have an important mission. Our agency has an important mission to help U.S. companies, help U.S. companies make sales in international markets and grow their business through exporting. Whether the companies are internationally experienced or brand-new to export, we have solutions to support them. As a government agency with global presence, we can open doors and nobody else can in global markets. Strategically located in 106 offices in U.S., within the U.S., and about 130 offices, foreign offices in 80-plus countries, strategic markets, our global network of trade and investment development professionals are very well positioned to help U.S. companies help succeed in international markets. Texas is an export powerhouse. In 2023, Texas exported $444 billion. Texas has been ranked number-one exporter in the nation for the last 20 years, and we don't want to lose the momentum nor the rankings. That's why we're here, to support U.S. companies in West Texas and continue with the same export trend. Our office in Midland is at 1310 North FM, 1788, and you can always go to our website at trade.gov. And you, on the search bar or the magnifying glass, you can enter Midland, and it's going to provide you with contact information. And I would like to approach the bench and hand out some flyers if I may.
Let's give them to the city attorneys. Yes. My only question is, why didn't you pick San Angelo, Texas?
Well, I've been going around within my West Texas, my territory, and I've been going around to spread the word and create community awareness. The office was... Or we didn't have an office to represent the West Texas Territory in a few years, so we recently restaffed the vacant position. And as a matter of fact, today at 10 o'clock, we have a round table at the Business Center to address or meet with some local partners and also local businesses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your attention and enjoy the rest of your day.
Further public comment?
Hello, Mayor and Council. Susan Kenny, representing Bally San Angelo. Our facility is at 82 Gillis, and my residence is at 910 West Washington. I understand I need to request the ability to speak to the item on the agenda at this time.
You have to do it during the agenda item, not during public comment.
Correct.
It'll be on that item.
Okay. Okay.
Further public comment? All right, with that, we will move into our consent agenda. What?
I just wanted to remind the public that on October 1st is when the new changes to the public comment policy will go into effect.
With the what? I can't hear you.
The public comment policy that council approved a couple months ago. Those will go into effect on October 1st. Just to remind citizens, they will need to sign in for public comment before the meeting. Speakers will be called in the order that they sign up, giving priority to citizens of San Angelo first. The times to speak remain the same at three minutes. Comments must be directed to council. Questioning of staff is not appropriate at that time, and of course, council has no obligation to respond, and comments must be relevant to the authority of the city.
Where do they sign up?
Okay. So they will sign up with me or the deputy.
Right here is your desk.
Yes, which will be right here before the meeting starts.
Okay. Other public comment?
Question, Mayor.
Yes.
Heather, does this apply only to council, or does this apply to all boards and commissions as well?
This does apply to all boards and commissions, and all staff will be trained between now and October 1st.
Thank you.
Further public comment? Okay, with that, we will move into our consent agenda. Are there items, Larry, that you'd like pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. E.
E. Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
No, ma'am.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item E?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those... Any public comment? Hearing no public comment, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion of consent agenda with the exception of item E has been approved. We will now talk about item E, which is consider awarding the buyboard contract number 660-21 for the youth sports practice area project to basic IDIQ Incorporated in the amount of $1,460,605.64, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Mr. Hunsula. Al Torres, construction manager, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, I was going through the list of things that would be included in this prefab building, and it kind of struck me odd that there was no grab bars indicated on it.
I will double-check, but it's supposed to be accessible. We went through the whole project, and we're providing accessible bleachers, and the bathroom's accessible, but I will double-check that and make sure that it's included.
You'd mentioned in there it was going to meet ADA standards.
Correct.
But I wondered in what respects. I guess my concern is, we've had projects that have been completed, and then all of a sudden, whoops.
Right. Well, because of the dollar amount, this has to go through TDLR review and TDLR inspections, so the state will make sure that everything is ADA compliant, including accessibility, getting to the building, the building itself, any features in there, height of paper towels, everything, you know. So grab bars included.
Did y'all give any thought to having these unisex bathrooms?
We have... Building code does allow them in certain situations, but typically, if you have above and beyond what's required, in a case like this, we basically just stick to what the code requires, which is a man's and a woman's.
Thank you.
Well, we know this project is how many years in happening? Let's see.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, yeah, 27 years.
Fifty-eight.
I think it's time that we, in fact, get this project done. I think the citizens have waited long enough, and I don't know how long it's going to take from this approval to action and to something being done, but it's time.
We're looking forward to it.
Okay. Thank you. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved 7-0. We will now move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, perpoundists, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. The first item, item A, is consider approving revision number one to amendment number four to the master airport agreement with JAVIation, a Woolpert Company LLC, to construct the South Taxi Lane, adding 186,961 to the base agreement, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Jeremy, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, council staff. Jeremy Valgartson, representing your San Angelo Regional Airport. This is not a new project to you. I'm really just here, I don't have a presentation, just to answer questions and update you on the project. If you remember, about a year and a half ago, you approved an agreement with JAVIation to construct or to design the South Taxi Lane using our federal AIP Airport Infrastructure Grant money that was released to us. So it was a little over $5 million grant over a five-year period, so we get about $1 million a year. We just started year four, so we have $4 million available for this project. The project has been out for bid three times now. Remember, the South Taxi Lane project was to add about 1,000 feet of pavement that ties into the existing south ramp, which would allow for 16 box executive hangers and then future nested T-hangers as we need to develop the airport going that direction. The initial bid was March 30th of '23. We received no bids. At that time, we had the runway project and the taxi lane project bid together using an FAA spec, because our local contractor said we would need to have mass quantities to be able to produce and make it worth their time to make the FAA grade asphalt. Received no bids that time. We bid it out the second time after speaking to the FAA. They agreed to allow us to attempt to make the bid in concrete, using FAA concrete instead of the hot mix. Sometimes it's cheaper in this part of Texas to go with concrete over asphalt when you have to meet federal spec. We did not receive any responsive bids that time from the asphalt nor for the concrete. After speaking with the FAA, they agreed, and speaking to some of our local contractors to modify the design, the FAA design, a little bit, we modified the P208 and put in P209, because the local contractor was able to make P209. Put the project out for bid. Again, we received no bids. Project's been out for bid three times now. It's difficult to meet FAA specifications here in West Texas. So we're working with the FAA. The FAA has agreed verbally to allow us to use a TexDOT modified mix that would hold up to a 60,000-pound aircraft and have a lifespan of 40 years. The challenge is that the TexDOT mix doesn't guarantee those specifications that the FAA requires. So we have challenged JAVIation to design a modified TexDOT mix that would meet those standards and specifications to keep the FAA happy. We have received the design. We sent it to our region at Fort Worth. Fort Worth has approved it and has sent it off to Washington, D.C. for signature. So the mod has still not been signed. The mod was sent to our region May 8th, 2024. So we're still waiting for the mod to be signed. I got an update from the FAA last week that said it's still at D.C.'s desk, just waiting for signature. Once the mod has been signed, we're going to be ready to put this project out for bid. So that's, in a nutshell, the gist of the project. I come to you today just to request some additional funds to JAVIation to redesign the project to meet TexDOT specifications.
Do we need to use... Do we need to use our representation in Washington DC to put some light pressure on getting the signature?
Yeah, I think that would help, Mayor. And I have spoken to Congressman Fluger's office about it. His focus right now is more on the approach control issues that we have going on, but we'd love to make a phone call to him and keep this on the top of his mind as well.
So, what other, what else can we do to make this project happen? Because this is an important project. We need it to happen. Obviously, if no one's putting in bids, we got a problem. And when they say, when you get no bids, is the issue the product that you have to use? Is that singularly the issue or is the issue that they're already tied up with so many projects that they can't get to it? Do we know?
That's a good question and we do know it. Over the past year and a half, we've had this out for bid. It's been a combination of both. The local contractors, very busy, and also we've reached out to several other contractors outside of San Angelo who are also too busy and not interested in the project. Construction's starting to slow down a little bit. We're starting to get a little more interest. And then the other part of your question is what can we do? If we're gonna do this project using federal funds, we have to meet FAA spec. The other way we could do it is we could use city funds to pay for it. We don't have to even wait for the FAA, but then that's cash out of our pocket that will not be reimbursed because it doesn't meet their specs.
So, we just need to apply pressure?
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions for Jeremy? Then may I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Second by Tommy. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes, seven, zero. Item B is discussion and direction regarding the Bill Ayler Senior Memorial River Stage. And Sydney, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Morning, City Manager. Sidney Walker, Civic Events Manager, here to discuss and receive direction from you all on the Bill Ayler Senior Memorial River Stage renovations.
How many times have we seen this now?
Several.
So, we're here today for what reason?
We're here for a discussion, well, some direction from you all on, so we can start on the first phase of the River Stage project and hopefully we can get some other guidance on how we should move for the second phase as well.
Well, this is the second year. We still have not put a shovel to the pavement.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure what keeps holding all these projects up, but timing's everything.
That's right.
And we're still waiting. We're still waiting.
We have to go through a process of design and put all that in place. And so, once we have all this design documents in place, then we can bring those forwards. And unfortunately, yes, you're right, that does take some time. So, Sid?
As you all know, the Bill Ayler Senior Memorial River Stage is located at 16 East Avenue A. This is still the current conditions of the River Stage. It was built in, well, it was opened in 1987 and has not received any major renovations since opening. Here's a little timeline of where we started at. Our Civic Events Advisory Board made a recommendation in favor of the River Stage renovations. And then on March 21st, 2023, City Council did approve of those River Stage renovations. And between that time of March and July of this year, design work, we were looking at the funding as well and also shade canopy feasibility research. And on August 22nd, our Civic Events Advisory Board met again and they did make a recommendation for us to move forward with the first phase of the River Stage of Phase One, which we'll get into as well. And then they also would like for you all to look at some of the high priority unfunded items that we do have.
In Phase One?
That's...
Or in Phase Two?
That's in Phase Two that they would like to see moved up to Phase One. So, for our green phase, the cost, sorry about... So, here's a look at, if you see, the green part is already funded or we do have funding for it. The city staff has secured almost 1.7 million in funding. The gold is, funding source is not secured. The green Phase One plans do include the box office concession additions, entry canopy, new paving and relocate fencing at Plaza, new elevated platforms relocating the fencing for ADA accessibility, relocate west side fencing, demolition, remodel existing restrooms, ADA issues, the storage dressing room addition, add production office, remodel the interior, also two new concrete ramps and stairs, paint all the surfaces, new loading dock and canopies, extend hillside seating, new stamped concrete, new bar, merchandise structures, irrigation, sewer lines, electrical, and a new concrete drive, paving, level drive. As you can see, the green phase costs, the construction subtotal is approximately $1.2 million with a contingency of $240,000, with AEPO approvals of $250,000, which brings the total to about 1.7 million for the green phase costs. Now, in the gold phase, which is unfunded right now, this will include the new 16 by 42 restroom buildings, the new sewer lift stations, as well as the new 48 by 72 restrooms, concessions building, site work, arbor walk and entry towers, new ticketing office, the new fabric canopy with lighting, as well as new digital signage. Now, the gold phase costs, which we do not have any funds for, which is unfunded right now, construction subtotal of 3.6 million with a contingency of $370,000, AEPO approvals of $917,000 with the estimated cost of a little bit under $5 million. As mentioned before, the unfunded high priority improvements include the shade canopy and lighting, which comes in around 1.3, and the new restrooms concessions lift stations come around 1.7.
How much of the 1.7 is the lift station?
$1 million. And this doesn't include the design or the contractor fees, but staff has identified an additional funding of approximately $720,000 for other unfunded improvements. So, I'm here to receive direction from you all on how, if you all approve of the first phase and if you all would like to see anything else moved up.
And really to clarify on that, I think the mayor's correct. Y'all have given us guidance on that first phase, so as far as we're concerned, that's a go. Y'all may want to confirm that again today, but that's a go. The really question is just gonna give you all insight on the remainder of the things that are out there and if you have direction or guidance on which way you would like us to proceed on those or priorities, then we can focus on those next versus spending too much time on design of something that's not gonna happen yet.
One thing I want us to continually do is to separate the restrooms and concessions from the lift station, because those are two totally different items. And particularly because that lift station, if I understand it, is an important issue because in fact, if we ever develop the Edgewater Inn property, this lift station has to be done regardless of whether it's the River Stage or whether it's the Edgewater Inn. So, that is necessary for development of the south side of the river. It can't happen without that lift station. So, we should consistently separate restrooms and concession dollar amounts from that lift station because the lift station is not a River Stage-only project. And so, we need to remember that and focus on understanding what that means. But it is necessary for any development on the south side of the river. So, with that, I think Harry had comments or question?
Do have a few comments. I'm ready to get started on what we've already designed and identified funding for. And we can talk about these other things in near future. To the mayor's point, we've got to work on this lift station as an addition to Phase One. I'm not interested in the canopy personally. I don't think it's a good investment, but there are six other people sitting up here and they may decide that that's what they want to do. So, from that standpoint, if you're looking for a direction, that's what I've got.
I would say the fine on the canopy, I think it is important, but I also think the following. We don't have today a plan for the canopy, meaning we don't have the research done. We don't have price tag attached to it. We don't know what that will look like, what it will cost us, and what we need to do with it. So, that, putting that aside, until we have answers on that, it's pretty hard to talk about that piece of it. But what I would do is go back to that other Phase Two list of things and determine if there's something there that we think needs to be brought forward into Phase One. You said you have $720,000 available that's been identified. I'm not sure what the restroom building would cost or concessions, but I do know the restrooms and concessions are a pretty important part of this project. So, but again, don't know what that expense is gonna be, but if there's funding that has been identified, I think we should incorporate into Phase One what you've identified in terms of funding and what that would buy us. Since we're already there working, what else can we put in there?
At minimum, I believe we should look into at least doing the 16 by 42 restroom building. I believe we do have the funding for that.
Sid, I'm assuming that if you did the restroom building, though, the lift station would have to be done.
And that's the question.
And I realize that's a separate item and we can look at funding options for that. So, if that's, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
We can go in and look at options.
And so, the question mark would be, I don't know if Shane Kelton is still in the room or, but the issue would be, is there any money in the water sewer fund that could put the dollars forward to pay for that lift station? Because it is gonna be necessary. It's not something we can avoid. It's gotta be done.
Sooner or later.
So, okay, Shane, I don't, and you know what? You don't have to come forward. I just know that I'm putting out there and ask for you.
Why don't...
Oh, make him come on up. Come on up.
And we can get together with staff.
Put him on the spot.
We can get together with staff and work through that and come back with some funding options for y'all.
Shane, what I'm asking for is your support in finding the money.
That's a nice way of putting it, Shane.
Yeah, for this lift station, which we know ultimately has to be done for development on the south side of the river. So, you don't have an answer today. We understand that. But I do, I got a lot of people up here that are really ready to move it forward and get it done. So, if we can find the monies for that lift station, we can move forward on the 16 by 42 restroom building, which restrooms are a major issue at the River Stage.
Yes, we can look at multiple different things, because we, a lot of times, we have, we'll have the pumps, we'll have the motors, we'll have a lot of wet wells already in stock in our general inventory for repairs, different things like that. So, a lot of times, we have a lot of that stuff that we could go ahead and move into, you know, just take it out of inventory and put it into the project, just part of the project. And two, we can also look, I'm not sure exactly what the OPCs came back for the construction of it, but I mean, we can look at that as well, too. We started getting into really larger lift stations and I'm not sure what the capacity on this one is, but we would definitely probably want to contract that out, but we can definitely look at using sewer funds to support that, so.
That would be my request, yes.
Sid, maybe Al, somebody, the price tag you had attached, I believe, to the unfunded, part of the unfunded was 1.7 something?
Correct, and that number comes from the figure for the new restroom building, the larger one?
Okay, hang with me a minute. That's not the slide I'm looking for. Yes, thank you. New restrooms, concessions slash lift station. So, now go back to that next slide where the first three things on there. Okay, new 1.7, and okay, keep going, I think. Next slide, next slide. Okay, does that include, does that 1.7 include 16 by 42, obviously lift station, but 48 by 72 and the concessions? Does that 1.7 include that?
It includes only those two items right there.
Okay, okay, all right.
Sorry, I said the 16 by 42. I should have been more aggressive in saying the 48 by 72, because that's obviously a much bigger...
That's what I wanted to help you with, Mayor.
And we know restrooms are in high demand, right?
Yes, and where that comes from is, of course, that's not designed yet. It's part of Phase Two. It's a cost per square foot number. That's how we came up with that, but I came up with $720,000 for that larger restroom and then a million dollars for the lift station. So, that's where that 1.7 came from.
So, if we can find a way through the sewer project, Shane Kelton's arena, and come up with that, I'd like to see that moved into Phase One. If you guys can come back and give us that, obviously Phase One, I think we're, we'll take a vote on or supportive of, but would like to add to the Phase One, the 48 by 72 restrooms, concessions building, and lift station.
Al, how much is the 16 by 42?
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember. Basically, that's another restroom building, how much? Seventy, 70,000? That's a small...
Say that again?
70,000, but you can't, but you can't, but you can't do that without the lift station as well.
Right.
So...
So, what...
I would say from my input, number one, 16 by 42, new lift station, 48 by 72 restrooms and concessions, that would be my input to this discussion.
And then we gotta have the sewer lift station with that, because you can't do them without that.
Yes.
So, we'd like to move those top three items into Phase One and you guys figure how we make that happen.
Okay, but to clarify, to clarify also, this would really be Phase One B, because we have to design them and there's no way we can make it part of...
But don't take two years to do it.
No, no, because we're moving forward with Phase One already from previous authorizations.
You don't get two years on that.
I'm working with a contractor right now to get that bid, so hopefully we're gonna have that bid very soon. So, these are gonna be One B.
We'll move forward on that and we'll see that number plus the design component will be added to that, so we'll work on those.
Tom?
So, as we look at this, it'd be great, and we can't do it to itemize it, so we can at least look and see, do some comparisons here. But something, if you're gonna look at something that's Phase One, look at things that helps, Sid, develop revenue, digital signage. I don't know what that costs, but there's a lot of revenue in digital signage. And I don't know what that is, but I would certainly look at ways to maybe help self-fund some of this with what we add in.
The idea on the digital signage, though, is part of Phase Two is this, is a new entry off of Avenue B up at the top of the hill with a new walkway that goes over to the top of the hill, stairs and ramps that go down to the River Stage. So, that digital signage would be at that new entry off of Avenue B. We could look at digital signage down below.
Digital signage, I first financial at one time was trying to donate something to the rodeo. They had a huge digital sign that they can't use anymore that's sitting in storage yet. I don't know if Chris Evans still knows where that is, but you can sell those things and generate revenue for an event.
And that's a question I guess we're...
You know, it's not a today deal, guys, but let's look at what that would be to include that and get something where they can make some money out of it.
Well, we also need to look at naming rights. I think there's some huge opportunity here for naming rights that until this is approved and we know what we're doing, it's pretty hard to quote, "sell those," but that should be a part of this whole plan.
Also, remember, we'll look at the signage, but remember it is in the river corridor and there are some specific guidelines about signage and flashing and digital and all those kind of things in the river corridor.
And the color of the lights and the paint.
Just to rain on your parade slightly, but...
And you did, and you did. Go, Rick.
So, based on your recommendation...
So, are we clear?
Yes, I'll get a proposal right away on a design proposal for those three items.
But Phase One, move forward ASAP.
Phase One's moving forward regardless.
Do it.
Yes.
Phase Two, we're gonna look at new 16 by 42 sewer lift station and 48 by 72 and look at if there's any digital signage that would fit in the river corridor that would apply.
I think Al said Phase One B...
B, yes.
To keep away from some of the other things that we don't plan on doing right now.
You're right, Harry.
Correct.
You're absolutely right.
Correct.
Are we clear?
Yes.
Then do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Oh, Larry or Karen?
I have some questions.
I'm not sure who.
When I was reading through this, it seemed as though part of Green Phase was a renovation of the restroom. Is that correct or incorrect?
That is correct. The Phase One that we're moving forward with, a big chunk of that is making the facility ADA accessible. So, that includes those existing restrooms, existing restrooms in the River Stage itself, ramps.
But that also includes this area where the one restroom is gonna be constructed, is that correct, based on your map? I'm looking at the map, the green area where the existing bathrooms are.
Correct.
Okay, are those the ones that are gonna be renovated?
Yes, yes, we are. Yes, yes, we are, we are adding accessible toilets in those two bathrooms.
Well, on top of that, the access to those bathrooms is pretty bad.
Yes, all, this is all new concrete walkways, this is a new entry plaza, so all of that's going to be accessible. Accessible walkways down to this area. We're adding handrails up these stairs. This fence, we're moving this fence to the outside of that accessible walk that goes from this lower level to the upper level, so that we'll have accessibility now from, from the ticketing area down to the lower level, rather than having people drive around and get dropped off down there.
I'll get ahead of myself a little bit. That ramp is a bugger, and I don't know how you're going to make it comply. And I would suggest strongly that rather than a 1 to 12 ratio on that, the recommended is a 1 to 16. That is a challenge for you.
Yes.
Okay. If I could talk bathrooms again, on the picture there, it talks about this 48 by 72 building.
That's this one.
Okay, and there's going to be a restroom over there, too?
Yes, this will have, this will be the larger women's and men's restrooms, and a concession area in the corner. I mean, as I said, it's not been designed yet, but that's roughly the idea, and that'll be accessible to people down on this level. The other restrooms will still be accessible. Essentially, you have three levels at the river stage. You have this, this, the stage level down here, you have, all of this is roughly level, and then you have the top of the hill. So basically, we're looking at making it accessible from, to get from this level to this level, but then everything on this level, you have restrooms and concessions up here, but we want to add restrooms and concessions down at the lower level.
The small gold building to the right of the existing bathrooms?
Well, we're, this is the 16 by 42 bathroom, the smaller one. So basically, what I'm looking at doing there, because we are-
That's strictly women's room, right?
Yes, we are, we are sorely under-
You know, you always need more restrooms for women than you do men, so we don't like those long lines, so.
So in addition to these restrooms here, we're proposing adding another restroom building here, making it strictly women's, and making this one strictly men's. And then this one, because it'll be better designed, will have more fixtures than this one, because the codes now require more fixtures for the women's side than the men's.
I blew up the picture of the ladies room there, and it's, it's 42 feet long, correct?
I believe so, yes.
And they have plans for eight stalls in there, that's probably less than five feet per stall. And I would recommend you take a look at how you're going to put a handicap bathroom in there.
There's, there's one in there. I mean, everything, we're required to design it that way. So you're required to have at least one 5 by 5 stall. For every seven stalls, you have to have one ambulatory stall. So we're going to make sure we have those minimums at least, both here and here.
I think that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, so with that, may I have a motion for approval?
So move.
So move by Harry?
Second.
Second by Larry. Did you second it? You seconded it. Public comment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Item C, consider the following items regarding meet and confer. One, approval of an agreement with the San Angel Police Officers Coalition establishing certain terms and conditions of employment for covered police officers to be effective October 1, 2024 through December 31, 2025, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. And, two, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal. It says heating, but I think it's hearing. All right, so again, the public hearing of an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, for police department salary adjustments. Presentation will be made by Brian Kendrick and Tina Dersky, and Noel Anderson, I believe. We got a lot of them up here to sell us on this, which is good.
Yes, ma'am. We come to you, I believe, unified here. So, I'm here to talk about this from a sort of high level, for sure. Oh, went the wrong way, sorry. So I've got some bullet points here. There's a couple of typos on this screen that, oh, nope, Brian fixed it.
There you go.
Isn't Brian great?
Yeah.
Brian Kendrick-
Where's Brian?
Human Resources Director, not talking about me, talking about Brian Groves. So, a lot of this was housekeeping related to some of the processes that we go through for assessments, for promotions, and how we go through recruitment. So, really just streamlining those kind of things, and we can go into level, into detail if you want to on those things, but I'm not sure that that's going to be, you know, super enthralling to the public to hear. So, they're really built-in common sense changes. Some of the, the rest of it is really related to the compensation plan within the city council-approved allocation. The coalition recommended incremental increase funded by freezing six positions to make it budgetarily neutral. There's drone pay added for four positions max. Training officers will now be paid at $100 per month when they're assigned to be training officers, and then there's on-call response overtime added. Again, we can go into as much detail as you want to. I think the, the main point that I want to bring up is it received 88% approval in the vote of the, of the police officers. So we are pretty unified. That's a, I think that's a mandate level. So, at that point, I think we'll take any questions.
Mr. Anderson, would you like to make any comments before I open it up, open the floor up for questions or comments?
This process was, this year seemed a lot more streamlined than last year, because last year was the big part of having to lay the groundwork, and we were able to get that done last year. So, this year with city staff, the process moved a lot more fluid, and I, I want to commend them for their efforts. It was very streamlined.
And I want to just kind of shout out Christine Russell, HR Manager and Civil Service Director. She apologizes, she can't be here, so y'all have me presenting this. She, she did a lot of the heavy lifting on our side. Teresa James did a lot of the heavy lifting. Christine is out today, testing for the highest certification you can receive in HR, and I'm sure she'll be bringing home that victory today. So I just wanted to shout out in the middle of this presentation. But, now questions?
Now, the floor of the council, do you have questions or comments or statements to make? Anybody? Larry?
I think both sides are to be applauded for their efforts in working this. This is a tough thing to do every year, and you guys have done a marvelous job of it.
Any further comments from council, questions? If not, then I need a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have two motions for approval and one second, and with that, we'll ask if there's any public comment. With none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
And I want to congratulate Sidney Walker on such a great presentation, even though he's a Saints fan, and he came to my office to rub it in. He, he delivered, he delivered chocolate-covered strawberries that were New Orleans colors, so we really appreciate that.
You were called out, Sidney. Item C, consider approving agreements with nonprofit organizations allocating up to $75,000 of hotel occupancy tax receipts for eligible activities listed as follows, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor, we did not cover item C, too, the first reading and public heating.
I thought when we approved one, we approved both.
Was that the intention of all council?
I read both, right.
You did, that was my intention.
Just want to make sure.
That was included in my motion.
I'll go back to item D. Consider approving agreements with nonprofit organizations allocating up to $75,000 of hotel occupancy tax receipts for eligible activities listed as follows, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. One, the annual request, San Angel Symphony, 25,000, Angel Civic Theater, 15,000, Ballet San Angelo, 15,000, San Angel Broadway Academy, 10,000, Fort Concho Museum, 2,500. Two, annual special projects, the Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center, 2,500, San Angel YMCA, 1,000, Emmanuel School of the Fine Arts, 1,000, Heritage Park, 500, and then item three, a new request, Downtown San Angelo Mini Miss Wool Pageant, 1,000.
Yes, as you recall, the San Angel Cultural Fairs Council dissolved this last year. Council had a discussion item during the budget workshop about allocations of the funding that had gone to SACAC, $75,000, and then that SACAC, through their process, had allocated to sub recipients. So that's what you see here on this list. We've organized them into three categories. The first, the San Angel Symphony, Angel Civic Theater, Ballet San Angelo, San Angel Broadway Academy, have been traditionally receiving these amounts over the last few years. And as you recall, during the budget workshop, y'all asked that the, that the funds be rounded up to the nearest thousands. That's what we did, so that reflects that. I would need to point out one difference here. In the caption, it shows 2,500 to Fort Concho for their Christmas and Old Fort Concho event. We rounded that one up, that's why we show in the presentation here to 3,000. The other events have been also in the past allocated funding through SACAC, and-
And I think those have been, because SACAC would hold events, particularly the gourmet dinner, and the funds that they raised from that paid for these additional items, I believe. I don't know, does that add up? I didn't add it up. It might not be true.
This shows a total of 74,000. I don't know if they used hot or if they used-
Tina, would you like to comment?
Yes, ma'am. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. These four had been traditionally supported by SACAC in the past, or at least over the last two years that Mark Stevenson sent to us. And they were funded at these levels. They did use a portion of the hotel tax for administrative purposes, but these all still fell within the 75,000.
Because I don't think traditionally we used this hot tax money for administrative costs for cultural fairs.
For the most part, no. They, they used very little of it for administrative-
So what dollar amount was?
I want to say it was like, maybe 9,000 of it.
Okay, so, go ahead, Carl.
And this, this shows one new event that, that applied for this year, the Mini Miss Wool Pageant, run by Downtown San Angelo. I would point out also that the Concho Christmas event had been receiving funding through, through the hot funds. They're not listed here. You'll see an item coming in the near future that addresses that, continued support for that important event.
Questions from council? Do I have a motion for approval?
I got a question.
Yes, I just asked for that. Yes, thank you.
There is a background letter in here from, from the ballet. Do we want to-
We'll do that separately.
Okay, thank you.
Because early on in our budget workshop, we were very specific about this year because we did not have enough time to develop a policy for hot tax requests with the cultural fairs, just, cultural fairs group shutting down and turning it off in terms of their participation. So, without a plan, without a program, without direction in terms of how we were going to handle it going forward, we specifically said we would, in fact, stick with these numbers, round them up, and that would be what we would approve for the 24-25 budget. So that's what those are. We, we have not met, there's not been anything presented to us by Rick or you for consideration for anything beyond this. So, I don't think we need to, shouldn't be approving anything at this point without a plan of action.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor, and that's what, what we budgeted moving forward is up to the $75,000, and these really are agreements that tie those monies to these organizations as well. So, you're correct that the direction that we received was up to 75,000.
I move to approve, Mayor.
There is a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Tommy. Public comment. Yes, yes, you can, Susan. Now's your time.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and Council. On July 16, I came and spoke to you and gave you a pretty thorough overview of the current work of Ballet San Angelo and our need for an increase in our hot fund allocation. And I think I demonstrated to you our increase in ability to attract the cultural tourist, also our significant investment in marketing that helps make the city look good. And also, I showed you statistics that our hot funding has been relatively static since 2007. It was 12.4% of our operating budget, which has now is six times what it was in 2007. So the hot funding represents 2.4% of our budget, and I respectfully request an increase from 15 to 25 in our hot fund allocation. We're a 40-year-old arts organization that the city relies on, not only for Nutcracker, which we're, you know, most known for, but we have a literacy ballet, literacy-based children's ballet in the spring. We bring life to the SAPAC model, which the city is invested in. We operate year-round, and so we're also working with seniors with neurological challenges. Joy of Movement is now in four locations. We presented in July. We were about to present to the United Healthcare Recruitment Event. We were representing our training base in New York. It's called Dance for PD. So we do a lot of work. Also, we're partnering with SAID. We're in the schools with a public health initiative called Sharing Dance. So we're working really hard to reflect the makeup of the city and serve all of the city. So, and I know I said that all in July, but I just really wanted to quickly reiterate that with this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Further public comment? All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve as, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. What we will do moving forward is, before we get into next year, have a meeting to determine how we'll handle hot tax. We'll relook at the whole program, et cetera, because we just didn't have time to get it reorganized and rethought through. So we know that there's some work to be done on that issue. Item E, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z24-08, a request to rezone property from general commercial, heavy commercial zoning district to single-family residential zoning district located at 21 East 30th Street. Aaron, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council and Mr. Valenzuela, we're here this morning to hear a few cases about development, so that we can create some more developable properties. This first one is Z24-08. It's 21 East 30th Street. You can see here on this overhead, you can see this is right off of Chadburn, where Chadburn, the frontage of Chadburn is commercial, but off to the east is, you start seeing residential. You can see this area, there's actually single-family houses all along here, and in fact, the subject property is in between some single-family houses. So this is a request to rezone from general commercial, heavy commercial to RS1. It's in District 2, Mr. Tom Thompson in the Lakeview Neighborhood. Again, you see that the vision plan, the comp plan shows that it's neighborhood. You can see this is Neighborhood Center, but then over here, you can see where the CG did at one point encompass that lot. What we're doing is now just bringing the residential back over, so a new single-family home can be built on that lot. So this did go to the Planning Commission with a recommended approval of a 5 to 0 vote, and city staff does recommend approving this change from CGCH to RS1 for a new single-family home.
Tom, do you have any questions or comments?
No, we had to clean up the paperwork, and we had planning, and them took it forward, so I'd move to approve, move to approve as presented.
And a second by Larry. Public comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Item F, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z24-09, a request to rezone from two-family residential zoning district to low-rise multifamily zoning district located at 1628 and 1640 Beacon Street.
Thank you, Mayor, again. This one is also kind of a cleanup item. This is a property that's getting ready for sale. They did go through a replat process, and you'll see that on our maps. And this really is to get the zoning- And this really is to get the zoning to match the replat process. So, this is Z24-09 at 1628 and 1640 Beacon Street. You can see here on the map, just off of North Bell, to the east of that, on Beacon Street, there was four skinny lots there. They built two duplexes, and now they have combined all those lots into one lot, and an investor is buying the entire package. So, to have four living units, two duplexes on one lot, you must have RM1 zoning. So, this is in the Paulan neighborhood, District Four, Ms. Lucy Gonzalez. The vision plan is transitional. You can see the acreage there, and it is from a two-family, RS2 zoning, to a low-rise multifamily zoning. So, you can see that that area had been zoned to RS2 at one point, which allowed the duplexes. Now, they're kind of putting them together as one piece of property, and so it is going to go to an RM1. You can see the commercial and light manufacturing in the area, and then the single-family and manufactured housing off to the east. This is kind of a good area to continue to allow those types of housing. That's one of our missing middle housing unit type things that we need. And our vision plan shows it as transitional, so it's that transition between commercial and residential RM1 is one of those transition-type zonings. With that, this did go to the Planning Commission, and they did recommend approval with a five-to-zero vote. And the city staff also recommends changing from two-family RS2 to the low-rise multifamily RM1.
Lucy, would you have questions or comments?
No, I'm just, my comment, I don't have any problem with that. I think that's going to be a good idea, so I move to approve as presented.
Second.
And a second by Harry. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We'll move to item G, first reading in public hearing of an ordinance for the following cases for property located at 2588 Armstrong. One, CP24-05, a request to amend the comprehensive plan, changing from neighborhood and commercial to Neighborhood Center. And two, Z24-11, a request to rezone from the single-family residential zoning district to the Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. Once again, you're on.
Thank you again, Mayor, City Council. This is a project just off of Armstrong Street. You can see here with the map, this is kind of an area that's in transition, as more and more families are being, family homes are being built on the north side of town in the Lakeview area, so we're very excited about that. This property here originally was designated as a single-family residential area. They platted it as that, but it never developed. The cost of development was just really too high for single-family housing. But a entrepreneur brought it and has wanted to move it now to commercial and looking to do a small strip center there. And so, you can see, there is some heavy commercial across the way, there is some general commercial along 28th. And Armstrong, of course, to the north, there's lots of new development happening at the front, or along Armstrong and 50th and the 40th area around Lakeview. So, this is a six-acre tract. It is going to be rezoned from RS1 to the Neighborhood Commercial. It is in District Four, Ms. Lucy Gonzalez, and surprisingly enough, it is in the Paulan neighborhood. Armstrong is the breaking area for the Paulan neighborhood, so I thought that was very interesting. We also are doing a comprehensive plan change from the neighborhood. You can see all this area that's got the neighborhood. But you can see to the north, this is designed as one of our major corridors, coming in as commercial and Neighborhood Center over the time. We are considering, because south of here, there are some good, there are several neighborhoods just south of here, instead of going to a heavy commercial or a strong commercial, it would be a Neighborhood Commercial. So, that's where we recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment from Neighborhood Commercial and Commercial Area, you can see at the very top, to a Neighborhood Center. So, that allows a lower intense commercial property to come in. So, let me take those off. This did go to Planning Commission. They did review it. They recommended with a five-to-zero vote for approval, and the city staff did review and approve both the comprehensive plan changing from the commercial and neighborhood designation to a Neighborhood Center, and the zoning designation from RS1 to a Neighborhood Commercial designation. Any questions?
Lucy?
Aaron, when you said it was a strips, it was going to be a strip center, what are we talking about?
So, it could be something that has multiple small retail shops, all the way from, say, maybe a small restaurant, almost like a Subway's, to maybe a tax store, stuff that is low intensity. They wouldn't allow a drive-through in certain, in that type of strip center. It'd be something, come in, you park, you go in, pay for a service, could be small retail, something like that. They haven't given us the actual plans yet, but the Neighborhood Center zoning designation allows that to be a lower intensity, but it still services that are needed for those neighbors that are in the neighborhood. They may have to go, and maybe it's a beauty shop, maybe it's something like that, but things like that, that you would need on a regular routine basis, but you don't have to go all the way across town to get.
And I definitely think that this area is in need of something like that, for that side of town, and for that reason, I'll go ahead and approve as presented.
Have some questions?
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Aaron, if you will go, maybe we can see it on this one. Isn't 26th just to the, doesn't it run all the way from Armstrong over to a corresponding street, and there's an easement for 26th? Major future development going across there? And the reason I know this is because member Juan Leal, and then we're building, that's his house right there, and there was an issue about a future development of a road that goes all the way through that. Does this affect that? Are those people aware?
This does not affect that. This is going to be just on the Armstrong side. Up here at the very top, right here, where there's actually a cell tower back there, there is actually a dedicated area that there's potential in the future, someday down the road, that a local road, not a major road, but a local road, could go back to that east. And I'm just going to go back, see if I can go back one. You can just see this neighborhood that's down in this area. There are some big properties in through here. There's not a lot of connection from 28th going north. It just depends on how those properties develop in the future. There's nothing with this rezoning today, or even the platting in the future, that's going to require something to go through there at this time.
Okay, cool. I'm good, thank you.
All right, so there's a motion. And a second by Tommy. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, did I just read G or H?
You're on H.
All right. First reading in public hearing of an ordinance for Z24-12, a request to rezone property from the Neighborhood Commercial and Single Family Residential Zoning District to the Low-Rise Multifamily Zoning District located at 2815, 2821, 2835 Houston Street, and 2826 West Houston Heart Expressway Frontage Road, and an unaddressed lot being lots 4-8, Block 81 of the Hatcher Edition.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't think some of us know all these additions were named along the way, right?
Yes, we have lots of, you can look at the plating and the surveying of our town. There's some very interesting names and some good history back there. But today, we're looking at some property that was cut by the Houston Heart Expressway expansion. You can see it right here, and you can kind of just see all those lots along through there as that arc of the freeway came through, kind of cut those lots off. So, these lots here, as you can see, they used to have some storage buildings on them. Code Compliance did a great job of helping clean that up and making it look better, although they're vacant. But now, we want to go through, and there's a property, the new property owner wants to build some low-rise multifamily on this lot. It has been zoned commercial, and one lot down here is zoned RS1, just not big enough to build an RS1 lot. And then, it includes each one of these lots along there. And so, it's actually a decent-sized lot, being .8862 acres. This is in District Two, Mr. Tom Thompson. The neighborhood is the Bluffs, which, again, interestingly enough, stops right there at Garfield. And the vision plan is Neighborhood Center. So, this is a request to rezone those lots from the Neighborhood Commercial, Single Family Residential, to a Low-Rise Multifamily Complex. So, you can see here, the multiple zoning in the area. There's a few pockets of Neighborhood Commercial, some general commercial back off towards, as you head towards Glenna. And then, you see the Neighborhood Center come in on the vision plan over there. And Garfield is one of the major roads that crosses under Houston Heart, so there's more activity down at that end, which also allows this end to be more residential in nature. So, with this, this project did go to Planning Commission with a five-to-zero approval vote, so they recommend approval. The city staff does recommend approval. Their next step, they did plat this property into one large lot, and then the next step is going to be looking at a site plan and seeing how those houses lay out, and what kind of landscaping plan and things like that, that they'll have. But they do intend to exit onto Houston, not Houston Heart Expressway, and utilize that, because most people are going to be going back to Garfield to circulate around, back to somewhere else in town.
Tom?
I spoke with one person at planning about this. Nobody filed any objections to it. It looks at a good way to use the property and generate some revenue, so I have no problem with it. Move to approve as presented.
Is there a second? A second. Public comment?
I guess that's me. I was a little slow there.
All right, well, then, back up. I've got a motion and a second, but we'll interrupt for a comment.
I'm glad to hear that the access, the primary access will be onto Houston Street. So, the question concerns, what is the appearance on a primary corridor through our city if we're looking at the back of a property? Has anybody talked about that? We don't know anything yet?
We've talked preliminarily about that with the proposed developer. His actual thought is actually to put some kind of nice fencing, but more like a stone fencing or brick fencing, as opposed to just a chain link or cedar pickets. It will go through, since this is multifamily, it will go through an urban design review that city staff will take a look at what those structures look like, how high they are, colors, materials, and things like that. But they are planning their primary access there on Houston. There is a potential somewhere down the road that they buy that little peninsula down there, and we, actually, there's no real reason for Hassel Street to kind of go through, because that's, nobody travels there. They're either going to Garfield, or they're taking a right there and getting on the access road. And then, they could expand that, and that may be their actual entrance-exit there, and they have put a little playground down at that end. So, we're looking at that. But we will be having a review of, the staff will be reviewing the aesthetics of that development coming forward.
That little triangle is a perfect addition to that. It just sits there. I know there's a for-sale sign on it. You can't miss it. It'd be great to incorporate it.
It would be great to incorporate it. Great to make it a productive little area. I think it'd be very beneficial for our community.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. And with all of that, is there any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to item I, which is first reading in public hearing of an ordinance for Z24-13, a request to rezone property from the General Commercial Heavy Commercial Zoning District to the Low-Rise Multifamily Residential Zoning District located at 2025 and 2029 Vaughn Street.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another residential project in a very unique area of our town. As most of you know, this is ASU property. They've just built a nice, beautiful kind of golf complex back there. This is Fairmont Cemetery. And then, we have this area that's right along the railroad, that has always had lots of commercials, some heavy commercial. But interestingly enough, it has one multifamily property, and then there was two single-family kind of sized lots, but they were zoned heavy commercial. They just have never developed. They've stayed vacant for many, many years. Well, we think this is an opportunity to get those two vacant properties to be developed, and also in conjunction with what's going on there. So, this is on Vaughn Street. It's .342 acres, and it's a request to go from the CGCH to a low-rise multifamily. It is in District Five, Karen Hesse-Smith, and is in the College Hills neighborhood. You can see here, this is designed to go kind of commercial, and there's lots and lots of commercial through that area. You can then see on the right side of your screen, the multiple different types of zoning. Now, being a low-rise multifamily, we feel like that does fit into commercial, because we see some of our low-rise multifamily areas around commercial. While there's not a lot of retail in this area, we can also envision, whether it's ASU students, and they're able to go to school, or if it's maybe employees that work at some of these places, that they're able to live there and still be able to get to employment areas, or they hit Knickerbocker, and obviously, we all know Knickerbocker, you can go just about anywhere in town. These are vacant. We do think this is a way to actually get them developed, and it kind of also protects the larger multifamily that's already there. With that, this did go to the Planning Commission. They did vote with a five-to-zero vote in recommendation for approval, and city staff also recommends the change from CGCH to the low-rise multifamily of RM1.
Karen?
I have no objection. I think it's an interesting idea. It'll be additionally interesting to see what happens to that large, single-family residential area to the left on your image, but let's give it a chance. It's not really a visible area, so if anybody's concerned about the change in use, it's not concerning.
So, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Good. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Tommy. Public comment?
Can I throw a comment?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Is this the same property owner that has the apartments?
Yes, it is.
You know, I think it's interesting, on College Hills, where there was going to be the Quilting Connection building, and they sold those properties and developed two townhouses or two duplexes on that property that looked really good, and they've sold immediately. And so, it kind of shows the opportunity, and, you know, people are really looking for it. It's really improved that little area, so, just sidebar. With that, any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. There's nothing in our closed session today. We will move into item A, which is eight, which is follow-up and administrative issues, which the item B is announcements and consideration of future agenda items. Does council have any of those that they would like to bring forward right now? If not, there's plenty of opportunities, we create the next agenda for the next meeting. And with that, may I have a motion for...
May I adjourn?
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, seven zero, at, in fact, 9:58 a.m.